Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 27th Planning Commission meeting. And ask if you have pagers or cellphones, if you would turn those off or silence those now, please, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you've come to talk to us about a case today, we have sign-up sheets, they're on the table right outside the chambers, and if you would complete one of those and give it to our secretary, we would be happy to hear you. And with that, we'll go to approval in minutes. Commissioners? Move approval, second. We have a motion and a second to approve the September 13 minute, minutes, cast your votes, and that's approved. James? You want to hear? Okay, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Is that like half a vote? Okay. Okay, continuance request, Russell?
We have three uncontested requests for continuance, item 27 is PC 10276, request to continue until October the 11th. Item 28 is PUD 1472, request to continue until October the 25th. And item 29, C 6376, request to continue until November the 8th.
Did anyone come to talk to us today about any of those items, 27, 28, or 29, on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance, second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the uncontested continuances, cast your votes, and that's approved.
We have six new requests for continuance, item 11 is CE 831. Item 12, SPU D 683. Item 15, PC 10322. Item 22, C 6356. Item 23, C 6313. Item 24, C 6385. These will all be continued until October the 11th.
It was my understanding that we were going to continue items 11 and 12 until the second meeting in October. I thought that was, didn't we decide the second meeting in October? Yeah, second meeting in October, so the 25th.
25th, is it? Okay, same question, did anyone come to discuss the items 11, 12, 15, 22, 23, and 24 today? Laura Miles, would you come to the podium, please? And give us your name and address for the record, if you would.
Laura Miles, and I live at 7413 Northwest 150th in Oklahoma City.
And we're considering a continuance on this item today?
Right, apparently that got deferred, and I didn't know about that, I'm here, so I took off work, sorry. So, can I, I don't know if, how, I don't, I've never been here, so I don't know, do I go ahead and just tell you what I'm concerned about, and then if I can come back on the 11th to discuss it, or?
I think we'd like to let you tell us what your concern is, because you have made the effort to be here, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the original plat that this developer submitted for, it's the one, the C 6313, they have a road west of the creek, the most western road, and I don't know if you guys have that to look at, but that area where they proposed to put this road is actually in a floodplain, and it floods every time it rains. And this is a huge creek area, and if they build this area up to make the road, not only is it going to create water problems crossing the road of 150th, but we live downstream from that, and we're going to have flooding in our, in our house potentially also, and that's a huge concern. And they've kind of just ignored the fact that there is a creek on this whole neighborhood plot, and the backyards are really right up to the creek also, and so I'm a little concerned about all of the water. Deer Creek area has a lot of water issues anyway. I have pictures, if that is helpful, showing that this area where the road is proposed, that they proposed the road is about four to five feet below the level of 150th Street as it is now, and if they go in and try to build that up to the level of the road, which is what they're going to have to do, there is no place for that water to go. And so, if they're going to do that, I, you're going to at least have to do some kind of water evaluation study to see the volume of water that could potentially be displaced, and where is it going to go, and make sure it doesn't go into our house. So, and I have, I mean, I have pictures, I have pictures of the creek showing how high it gets, and I don't know if that's helpful or not.
You could leave those with the secretary, we'll get those incorporated in our staff report for the next meeting.
Okay. And then, I spoke with the engineer, and he's like, oh, the developers said that they could just get rid of the road, but apparently there's a fire code or something that so many houses have to be accessed directly from a road, and I know I'm misquoting that, but there's something about that. And my concern is that they're going to say, okay, we're just going to delete the road, and then the fire department's going to look at this and go, no, no, we have to have a backup road to have access to that, and then the road's going to get snuck in there, and we're going to still end up with some water issues. And then there's some concern about the volume, the number of houses for this area. The area where this is being built across the street, these are all estate homes on acreages. Our acreage is 26 acres, and most of the other homes are at least five acres, and they're just stuffing tons of houses into this one little spot. And there's lots of different houses, additions going in right in this area also. We have two huge apartment complexes going in just off of Rockwell. There's another addition that's going off of Rockwell just north of 150th, and there's a housing addition going off of Council in between Memorial and 150th that are all smaller homes. And at some point, we kind of have to realize that we have taken something that has become an acreage property now down to apartment and very, very tight housing. And so, we'd like to also have them revisit this. And there had been some discussion apparently in January about the number of houses per acreage, and they have not abided by whatever that recommendation had been, so.
Well, the zoning is R1, which means it can be 6,000 square foot lots, and that's already in place. So, if they're complying with the zoning ordinance, then that's what they're actually permitted to do, we can't limit it.
Okay.
As to roads, one of the things we have a policy about is connectivity, connecting neighborhoods, for a whole lot of reasons, which is one reason why you see a street stump to the west, excuse me, to the west. And fire department has concerns, and we have ordinances about the number of houses before you have to have multiple accesses to an area for public safety reasons, so those things all come into play. I would encourage you to come back in two weeks if you're able to, when this item is heard in full.
Okay.
We appreciate you coming down and.
Ma'am, one question, you mentioned you'd already spoken once with the engineer?
I've talked to the engineer personally, yes.
And you didn't get any of your questions answered as to how the drainage and the roads would be done?
No, he said, all he, well, he came back with, he said, well, I spoke with the developer, and they said, well, we're just going to admit, omit that western road completely. And that, in the same sentence, he said, well, the fire department has this issue, and so, to me, that kind of was like, okay, I'm just going to tell you, we're going to get rid of the road, but we know we're going to have to put a road in there anyway, and forget about the water issue, because that's not my concern. That's kind of what I got out of, it was the engineer that I spoke with, not the developer, because he had called me about a different issue.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's nothing been addressed about the water issue on this whole area, and I think that's, that's something that, as more and more of those neighborhoods are popping up in this Deer Creek area, you're going to have to go back and really start looking at the water table here, because Deer Creek floods everywhere, all over the place. And the more neighborhoods coming in, the more water there's going to be with all the sprinklers, and at some point, somebody's going to have to address that, and either start requiring these huge neighborhoods to put water basins to collect the water, or, you know, come up with some other plan.
Thank you.
Or we're going to be in trouble.
Thank you for coming down today. Commissioners, a motion on the additional continuances?
Move the additional continuances, second.
We have a motion, a second, to continue items 11, 12, 15, 22, 23, and 24, cast your votes. That's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Okay, Russell?
We are on the consent docket, there are five items on the consent docket. Item one is PC 10317. Item two, CE 832. Item three, ABC 763. Item four, C 6391. And five, PUD SP 1369.
Anyone here to discuss items one through five on our docket today? Motion?
Move the additional continuances, second.
Okay, we have a motion, motion and a second to approve the consent docket, cast your votes, and the consent docket's approved.
An item requiring separate vote, item six is PUD SP 1442. This is an application by Lindsay Management for a specific plan pursuant to approval of PUD 1442 at 14,600 North Rockwell, Ward 8.
Lindsay Settle with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report, there is one TE, and we are in agreement with it.
Commissioners, no one has signed up?
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item six, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item seven is C 6375. This is revised final plat of Providence Creek, Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. This item and the next item kind of run hand in hand. As you can see, the, this plat was before you, once before, where we were taking access from Maiden Lane, the gated community to the west, which is part of Hidden Creek, Section 5. Since that, this plat was approved, the property owners have worked out a deal to where the owner of Providence Creek has acquired lots eight and nine of Hidden Creek, Section 2, and we've applied for the ED, which is your next item, to extend that public street to the north line of the Hidden Creek section, and then it'll be gated into this 10-lot addition. So that permitted the project to go forward without a double gate, or different things that were going on in the original concept. We have been working with the staff, we also, and I spoke with Commissioner Gales briefly about this, and I apologize for bringing this on kind of at the 11th hour, but we had a conversation with the fire marshal several weeks ago, and Mr. Wilson's been sick for several weeks, and so we really never got any response, but we had approached the fire marshal's office with regard to the conditions in this addition, and what had been approved prior to this particular addition. And I bring before you an exhibit that we put together, just to kind of illustrate, the original preliminary plat for this whole 80 acres was based on, you know, half of the lots being on the southwest, or I'm sorry, southeast side of the creek, and then the other half being on the northwest side of the creek. The density was much greater back then, but we ended up putting this four-lane bridge in, as you recall, to allow for fire access without having to cross the creek more than once. As this development has occurred over time, the pink lots are the larger of the lots, the creek lots, and then these standalone, single-family, there's only 62 of those. This access point was to allow us up to 100 lots. And then we, as time went on, we came back and replatted the portion in blue to more of a cottage setting, which has been very successful, and we agreed with the fire marshal at that point in time that we would sprinkle all those houses, so all what's in blue is being provided fire suppression. The 10 lots that we're showing you today in the green color are a continuation of the, those being served. There is a note on the plat, that we put on the original plat, that says sprinkles will be provided. The client, my client has asked me today, since we weren't able to get a response back from the fire marshal's office relative to this condition, which we met, we talked about it, Mike was in favor of it, but he was going to talk to some other people, and then he got sick. We'd like to add a TE that allows for that note to be removed before recording if the fire marshal concurs with us. And so I've shared that, on behalf of my client, these are bigger lots, there's only 10 of them, it's restricted to 10 lots, and that's his request to not have to sprinkle those because of their separation in size.
They don't appear to be any easier to get to than those which have fire suppression.
Yeah, the issue here was the density, there's like 70 lots here, and the density on just these lots was going to throw us way over the 100. That's why we agreed to that.
Nick?
The issue originally was that of density, and when I say density, not so much that those were smaller lots up there, but that those, because they were smaller lots, then the number of lots increased and went over the number required. That's why we originally required sprinkling. I would prefer to leave the note on the plat to sprinkle them for two reasons. One, we're still over the number, like, and that's why we had them sprinkled in the first place. But two, if you study this plat, this is at the very end of the subdivision, and, you know, should there be a fire down there, it's still going to be difficult to get more than one piece of equipment in and out of there. We saw this several years ago on a very similar type of layout on a plat in Bocage. The house that burned was at the very end of the deal, and the fire department was doing everything they possibly could, but they were literally juggling equipment over the same spot to try to fight that fire. So, one, I'd like to leave that. And then, Tim, I had another question that may already be addressed in here, and I just don't see it. We've had some very standard language at the request of the Parks Department about drainage and park, nature park, and it's very specific language. Is that language in here?
We, we are providing, and the detention plans are approved, we've provided detention, and per the staff's recommendation, we put, we wrote a letter to the Parks Department, to the Public Works Director, adding, specifically stating that it was designed according to the ordinance.
Well, I got that we've done detention and that we've designed it, but I would also like to see that specific language that's been in every other plat, not just.
Yeah, if there's a note to that effect, we'd be happy to have that. I didn't, the staff didn't bring that up, we just, we did write a letter to the Public Works Director at their request.
No, I understand, but, you know, the additions to your west, to your north, the rest of Hidden Creek, they all have that same verbiage, and I would like to get, add a TE to get that in, in there.
And I don't have a problem with that.
Make that TE 8.
The only other thing I'd like to add to Nick's comments, and you're completely accurate, we did have a lot of discussion because of the uniqueness, it's a very deep, deep creek, it's 20 some odd feet deep, and the bridge was very expensive to build back when we originally developed it. We did agree, and the fire marshal concurred, that if we would make Deep Woods Boulevard, or Deep Woods Avenue, whatever we called it, a 32-foot collector's street, that was part of the deal, so we did do that. So this is not only a four-lane bridge, but this is a collector's street all the way to here. So that was, again, part of that same agreement. It's a long cul-de-sac, there are turnarounds interior, but it serves as a collector's street to provide them adequate access. So, at the end of the day, I mean, it's, it's the fire marshal's call, we, we have a dual access point that gets us up to the 100 lots per the subregs, and that's why the owner wanted to add that TE. If the fire marshal does not want to concur with that, then he's okay putting sprinklers in at that point in time, but it's really, he feels like it's the fire marshal's call.
You want to leave it on, you want to leave it on the plat notes now?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, other discussion, no one signed up?
I'll move the variance on TE 3 with the, I don't know if we have to add the TE 3, that we're not going to modify the note, because it's already in there that they will be sprinkled, but with the understanding that note will stay on the plat. And then I'd like to add TE 8 to include the standard language.
Martin Nature Park language?
The Martin Nature.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item seven, as Nick has conditioned it, cast your votes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, excuse me, variance, I'm sorry.
And then I'd move the application with the addition, TE 8.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance, cast your votes. And a motion, second, to approve item seven as conditioned, cast your votes. Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Then item eight is ED 201, it's a companion item, it's an application by Malagro Property to dedicate a street utility easement for Deepwood Creek Drive.
And this is just housekeeping to make that more, right, so I'd move approval.
We have a motion, a second, to approve item eight, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item nine is PUD 1466, an application by R&amp;R Land Development to rezone 8801 Southwest 59th Street from PUD 1363 to PUD 1466 in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Barry Lodge, representing Red Rock Engineering, representing the applicant. Also have with me Rocky Clark with R&amp;R Development, if we have some questions for him during the discussion. This is on the PUD, we've worked with staff over the last couple of months to resolve what they had listed in previous staff reports as the unfavorable considerations, and I think we've got all of those worked out, so that in this, the current form of the PUD, that they've not listed any unfavorable considerations, and so we ask for your approval. Ask any questions?
No one has signed up, Buck? If you'll just sit down, let them have the podium, and we'll ask you to respond to their
I'm Carol Baker.
And your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Address, please, your address.
Yes, 6,000 South County Line Road, it's right there at the corner of County Line and 59th, Southwest 59th.
Okay, thank you.
Our biggest concern about this is the fact that a very large amount of this is in the 100-year plane, floodplain, and that we had at one point in time, a number of years ago, whenever this first started hitting onto the committee, excuse me, they had wanted to start with it, and at that time, we pointed out the fact that there was an awful lot of this area in the floodplain. And we were told at that time that they were addressing that, well, that in 2007, that was, decided not to do that one in 2008, they came back with a little different plan, and it was not agreed to either on all of the fact that there was going to be too many housing for the amount of property and so forth. And this year, and we've had this set aside several times, this time they are wanting to do for a senior living center, which would be for people 55 and older, which puts it in a little bit different plane. For one thing, they are not putting sidewalks in within, they're calling it paths, so with 55 and older, you're probably going to have a lot of people that are going to be disabled to a point of needing wheelchairs or so forth, and there's none of that mentioned in it, only paths, nothing paved. Also, there is a great deal of this that is going to be in, as you can see, where the red marks are, that is where the 100-year floodplain is. This all over in here, and over in here, is where he's wanting to build. So, our contention is, he's going to have to bring in a great deal of fill dirt, Loma, in order to get that up to where it would need to be for the 100-year plain as plus a foot is required for the foundations. In one place, in the information, it's stated that he would be putting each one would be evaluated as to how high it's set above the floodplain, each one of the properties, and that from that, they would add the one foot, and that's the way we do it, rather than to bring in and leveling out the whole area and making the streets and so forth, which is, in the beginning, was really cost prohibitive, and it's not any better now with the cost of everything. But he's not wanting to do it the way it should be done. He's wanting to go in and put in 10 and 10. The 10 his son and himself are going to do, and then there's Dr. Foster that's going to put in another 10. And in this, he's just going to put in that much to see how it flows. He actually cannot tell us that it will do it for sure. The properties are going to be leased, he said, in the beginning, he said that it would be, I say Rocky, he said that it would be sold, but then he decided that they would lease it. So where it refers to homeowners and this and everything, he would be the homeowner, he would be the one that was responsible for keeping that going. So it's alternated back and forth between this, all of this all along, whether it's homeowner or leased land. And the last meeting we had, Buck was there with us, and he'll testify to the fact that he was told that it would be lease property. We're talking maybe as high as $1,250 a month.
That's, that's not our issue, in terms of whether it's rental property or each unit's owner occupied, we're looking at whether we rezone the land.
Right, that's true, and I apologize for that. Basically, it really goes back to the same thing. We have this nice creek that runs through here with a lot of trees, wildlife in it and everything, and this is just the FEMA floodway. This out here is the 100-year, so you can see it takes in a lot more property that would have to be addressed. At one point, he said he would take property off over here and move it over here to do the fill-in.
And that, that's fine, he would have to comply with the city ordinances and
Right.
get things signed off by our Public Works Department, our own engineers would have to approve his design.
It has to be of a certain height, but then in other places within the things that were requested by your committees, that this area should in reality probably go into common area, rather than to be in the homes, and that he could, he could do these.
A good part of it will be in common area.
Well, not the way he has it on his latest rendering, on the latest rendering, he shows that it's just this is the plain problem right in through here, and this has nothing to do with anything, but that in reality is the 100-year floodplain.
Unless he modifies it.
Yeah, and as to whether he, his ideas on how to modify it have not really been very clear.
Well, that's, he needs to work that out with our engineers.
Right. So our, our thing is, we don't feel like it should be blanketed, go ahead with it until the floodplain, which supposedly has been gone over by his engineer, which we've not seen any information on, so we don't know how close it is to actually what this is, but this came from the city.
We won't, we won't see that either. It, if we approve the rezoning, the work will be done between the applicant's engineers and the city's engineers, and the city Public Works Department will have to sign off on it before they can do anything.
Before they can do anything.
So come to the microphone and give us your name.
John Baker, 6,000 South County Line Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73169. Our property bounds this tract all the way along the south. We're our, we're across the street, so we're across Southwest 59th, but we're essentially his neighbor to the south. Now, this creek crosses our property too, and what can we do? See, this flood study that they supposedly have completed, at least we've been told that, which I doubt if it's been submitted to FEMA to obtain the Loma that's going to be required to build, build this thing, but. be required to build, build this thing, but what's going to happen, since we're upstream, if he narrows this floodway down, it's going to have an effect on the flood elevation on our property. And I mean, question is, I mean, what should we do about that?
Well, it floods now, doesn't it?
Yes, but it's, it's going to get higher.
Well, generally speaking, they're required to provide detention or some other means to keep the flow at the current, nothing greater than the current rate, I mean, they're not required to stop it from flooding.
Except we've been told that detention's not required, this basin.
Well, again, that's, we're not flood experts here on the planning.
Well, I know it, but I mean, what can we do from here on out? This is going to go to the city council and go back to engineering. How can, how can we have some input into this?
Well, you can talk to our city engineers when they work on this project, you can also hire your own engineer.
I am an engineer.
Well, then, you're, are you the sort of an engineer that deals in these kinds of issues?
I've never done a flood study.
Okay, well, you, well, you've got a couple of choices, one is to work with our engineer and with the applicant's engineers to hopefully get a resolution or satisfaction. Curtis, who's walked into the room, is our city engineer, and he'd be a good person to talk to, and you always have the ability to retain your own.
Now, I do have a question about this, in this area right here, if he takes the soil out this, because this is only a tiny bit right here.
Well, see, ma'am, I don't know how he's going to do it, I don't know if he's going to remove soil, add soil, again, that's.
And it does come into the realm of this whole thing, though, so what part is it that we're actually addressing today?
We're addressing the zoning of the land only.
The zoning only?
Mm-hmm.
You're not saying what he can and cannot do or anything, is that what you're saying?
Well, the zoning, the rezoning will permit, in this case, what he's asking for, which is the duplex housing. Now, he asked, he asked, well, that's what the zoning request is, but he has to meet all of the other conditions, all of the city ordinances that would apply, including drainage.
And does that include the, how many facilities it's going to increase and what its original thought was?
The zoning, the zoning controls spacing, number of units, and then that will control how many different dwelling units will exist, that's what zoning is.
Okay, all right, so our concern is that he, you know, it does meet all these needs.
Well, and you.
How do we, how do we see to that?
I've explained that you need to work with Curtis, who's our engineer in the public works department, because they will have to meet all of the city ordinances, including drainage and flood control.
Right, we do need, but not that.
Oh, he's right over there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Mr. Lodge?
Not sure exactly where to start on responding to that, other than to tell you that we have prepared the flood study for the creek, it has been submitted to the city engineering staff, they reviewed it, we've gotten some minor comments back from them, we're addressing that to resubmit. One of the things, maybe to set some people's mind at ease, is that the calculations that we have done do show that we do not increase the hundred-year water surface elevation beyond the limits of the property owned by R and R Development. There are some areas within his property where that flood elevation does increase, but he is allowed to do that since it's on, that increase would be limited to his property only.
Mm-hmm.
And beyond the, on the south side of Southwest Fifty-Ninth Street, we do not increase the calculated one hundred-year water surface elevation.
Okay, commissioners?
Barry, one quick question, I'm a little confused, when I looked at this application, it appears to me that this application is actually reducing the number of units that were proved in the previous P U D, is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
So in regard to her question on density, it's actually
Going down, yes.
Coming down from what was already there, and that's why I didn't, wasn't quite following all that, thought maybe I didn't understand.
Yes, that is true.
The density is coming down, thank you.
Buck, anything to add?
No, we did meet with a lot of the residents in that area out there, and Rocky kind of explained what his plans were, and, you know, it appears that what he's proposing is, is an improvement over what is already approved on this property already, the zoning, and with that, I'll, I'll move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to.
I'd like to make a comment about the application, if I could.
Go ahead.
And that is, is that on the map that I see, I don't see any access from the tract on the left side to the common area, I mean, pardon me, to the commercial area, there's no.
The tract on the east side of the creek?
Yeah, there's no way, what I see that you can get from a house and walk to the commercial area on that side. Second comment is, huh? That, that bit, there's, there's no way to get there, and that was a subject this morning, but, see, that, that's, you've got, no, 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 this, the main, the main bit, access to that, how do they get there?
We, we will have, and that's just, we've got the, the internal sidewalk system.
Okay.
And, and we do have connections that would come out of this main common area.
That's where a clubhouse is going to be in that, in that bit?
We'll have a trail that comes through.
Yeah, okay.
It will connect.
It doesn't on my map, though, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, that's why I'm bringing it up, I don't see where you've got access of those group of people into that commercial area, and you're assuring me that there will be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was one of the points of discussion with planning staff, is that they wanted that connection from the residential building.
But, but now, could we, could we add that to the picture?
It's a requirement in the P U D, and the state has come in, we'll make sure that the four tracks connect.
Now, my second one, turn your map over. I don't see any access on the track three over here, on the, right, that, no, I don't see a way to get to the common area if, on, from, if, there's no trail like you do on the other one.
We, we will have, we will have access from track three also, and we can, we can definitely modify the P U D to save.
That, that I, I'd like to see that as well, because you've got to get both sides into that common area, and, and I don't know, I assume that you're going to have a sidewalk on Fifty-Ninth Street?
That was, that was added to the P U D.
Yeah, so therefore, those people can walk on the sidewalk to the commercial area if they want to.
Exactly.
So you'll add, you'll add the access to the common area to the P U D.
Yes, we can add.
Is that okay?
That's not a problem.
All right.
I, I had a question too, based on the comments that Ms. Baker made, that the surface of the pathways that you're going to install, will it be something that would, that would permit the use of a walker or a wheelchair?
Do you want to address that, Rocky? You know more about what you're planning to build.
We're looking at different surfaces, we're not.
You need to come to the microphone, sir, and I'd. And give us your name and address, please.
Rocky Clark, thirty-six fifteen Joshua Lane Moore, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Seven three one six five. We're looking at, at different surfaces, what we're trying to do is have that whole inside area without fencing where it's kind of a gathering place, so they will be absolutely walker accessible and wheelchair accessible. And, and standing here right now, I'm not sure how the age, whether it's going to be an average of sixty-two or seventy-six, I, I don't know what the age is going to be, it's not going to be an assisted living at all, but they will, that's the whole ideal of the thing, is to upscale and make it where people can gather.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item nine, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item ten is C sixty-three sixty-six, this is a revised preliminary plat of Whispering Creek.
Again, Barry Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, representing the applicant, we have reviewed the staff report for the preliminary plat and the T Es that were listed in the staff report, we are in agreement with all of the T Es except T E number three, there's the recommendation, and the way the T E is worded says that our entrance road into the development should be relocated during our meeting with traffic engineering staff prior to the traffic study, this was brought up as, it was, it was mentioned, at that point, they also agreed that we were in compliance with the codes and requirements for the road separation, and that it would be acceptable to have it in its place. And, and this, if you look at the, if you look at the way that it's laid out coming into the clubhouse on that, with that street, if we move this entrance road another hundred and fifty feet or so to the south, it really starts throwing off this idea of the central recreation area, the clubhouse, that, that is the first thing that you see when you drive in, so it, it's a little bit more central to the concept that, that the developer's trying to do with this, to have that street located where it is, and it is in compliance with the required separation by the engineering staff, so we would ask that T E three be
What is the separation requirement for offsetting streets, is it two hundred feet or a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty feet.
And you've got that, that a separation?
Yes, sir.
Buck, have you had any discussion about that? Any objection to it? Okay, all right, we'll take. T E three, we'll delete it. Any other discussion, commissioners? No one signed up? Okay, a motion is second to approve item ten, deleting T E three, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thanks very much.
Item eleven and twelve have been continued until October the eleventh, item thirteen is P C one zero three one five, application by Partner City Schools District One to rezone forty-seven eleven North Tulsa from S P U D five seventy-eight, and A A Agricultural to R one single family in Ward one.
And no one signed up, commissioners?
Thank you, sir. Paul Hurst, representing Partner City Schools, with me is Rick Waters, representing Architectural Firm, Architecture, Inc., and we're here to answer any questions that you may have about these zoning requests.
I drive by this every day, it's just at the north of where my office is, and what I, I smiled when I drove by that place that was the Elk Lodge, it's no longer the Elk's Lodge, there's grading equipment, it's like you guys knew what we were going to do already, but anyway, so I approve this application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item thirteen, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Item fourteen is P C one zero three twenty, an application by Ritchie Insurance, rezone twenty-six forty-four Southwest Forty-fourth Street from R one single family to O one Limited Office in Ward six.
Pointing to Ritchie, twenty-six forty-eight Southwest Forty-fourth.
And you've already cleared this lot, have you?
Yes, sir.
Here's my comment, is that this is a.
Microphone, pardon me?
Oh, you've got your microphone, I'm sorry. I do, oh, yeah, here. That, that this is, again, another, what, addition to a residential area being made more commercial, and the only objection that I have, I don't object to the parking lot, but I do, I don't see anything that you're doing to protect the neighbors to the south, in other words, there's somebody that lives to the south of you, where the parking lot's going to be, and in these cases, we are, we try to get like an S P U D or, I mean, rather than just straight rezoning for a parking lot, to make, you know, something about where you have landscaping or particularly protection to the neighbors to the south, that I would, and I don't know why the staff didn't say, you need to come in with an S P U D that would have those items in there, that's my objection to this, rather than straight zoning.
The O one zoning district will require site-proof fence, hand of five, hand of five-foot green belt inside.
Does the applicant know that?
Yeah.
Yes. But wait, she's shaking her head.
No, I didn't know. That's just one of the requirements for the O one district, a site-proof fence, and the first five feet inside the fence is a landscaped green belt, then you start your parking.
But, but I want to be sure that they know that that's what they're going to have to do to put the parking lot in, a fence to the back and landscaping.
No, I have a question then. We have had the property at twenty-six forty-eight, which is adjoining property, we've had that property for over thirty years, it's been zoned commercial all those years, we just received a citation that we could no longer have a gravel parking lot because of the beautification for Forty-fourth Street, and so we have done, we have done a concrete parking lot there. There is nothing to the back of that, it's just in a very poor area of Southwest Forty-fourth, which all of you know, but it's been good for us, for our insurance agency.
But.
So the house next to it became available, or was put up for auction, so it was condemned, and we thought someone may get in it and set it on fire that would burn our office, so when it came up for auction, we bid and got the bid, so we got the permit to demolish the house, and instead of it just being an empty lot there, we just said, why don't we do parking here? And that's why we did the application.
And so many of our people have had to back out onto the street.
From our.
And which we hate.
I don't, I don't argue with what you want to do, but you bought a piece of property that zoned R one, and you're changing it to O one. O one requires you, when you put the parking lot in, to build a site-proof fence in the back and provide landscaping that the, that the statutes require.
Okay.
I just want you to be clear that
Okay.
when you do this, that's what you have to do, and it'll be nicer for your people to back up, but that.
Appreciate it.
If you have any questions, contact J J or the staff about exactly what it is that's required for you to do, okay?
Thank you.
One, one other question, have you already installed the parking lot?
No, no.
Just at the old parking lot.
Twenty-six forty-eight, twenty-six forty-four is just cleared off.
Okay. And we were very ignorant to the, you know, we, we.
They've not done anything there on this lot yet.
Yeah, the building permit process will catch it also, so.
Right.
We have fixed our parking, where I've been there for years, and we just wasn't aware of
No.
of, of the law and.
Okay, what's your, what's your question?
I have a question, yes, so our current address is zoned, same zone, twenty-six forty-eight is zoned, same as this one is requested to be zoned. My question is, as are, we're going to have to put a site-proof fence behind that.
Technically, if it's O one and it borders our, our one, the answer is yes. Isn't that correct, Susan?
Well.
Bless his grandfather.
It's existing, no.
It's existing, so they wouldn't have to. Depends on how long, well, they've been there for thirty or forty years.
We got our permit in eighty, nineteen eighty, I have a copy of it.
We don't have, there's no retroactive component there.
Not on the screening, no.
It should have been.
It should have been screened. Should be nice if they did, but it's green.
Probably don't have to do it behind your current office because it's been there so long. Be nice if you did it, but you don't have to.
Yes, well, it'd be no problem.
And that's no problem for us to-
No problem.
Do this.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be contentious over that.
That's fine. We appreciate that. Motion for the application. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15 has been continued until October the 11th. Item 16 is C 6373, preliminary plat of the villas at Cedar Point in Ward 7.
Chairman, Members of Commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. There are seven TEs. I agree with all of them. We need a variance on number two. And I, if you still want that explanation, why we need a variance?
The Spanish TE, three, not two, if I've got the right case.
Two.
Which one am I on? 16.
16.
We'll see, I don't have the right case.
Go ahead and vote on the next one, number three, too, if you want to.
Okay.
Two on this one.
Uh, is everyone clear on why we're doing this variance? I had, I asked Brian why he needed it, and he gave me an explanation, so the question is, I mean, I understand that I'm-
Give him an explanation?
Yes.
Okay, and you don't see it on this drawing, but on a plat, what we do is we do everything off the center line of a street. In Oklahoma City, the rules are your, your intersection should always butt at 90 degrees. Sometimes, because of the shape of your land, you can't really do that. And I was, as explained to the chairman, when you're driving the street, you really don't drive down the center line of the street, and you don't turn 90, you just drive to the intersection, you turn. But you really don't know when you're driving if it's a 90-degree or 100-degree, or, I mean, get to 125, yeah, probably. But in this case, because of the shape of the land, we needed to just make some variances, which is what we're asking for, to make it work. So it's kind of an, I call this an infill project. It's kind of a leftover piece that's been there a long time.
Okay.
Brian, have you, Brian, have you, have you, excuse me, has a, has a site distance pin, uh?
Yes, this actually is another plat we did this years ago-
Yeah.
-on a different layout, same, same location, so it was shot back then, so I think we're still okay there.
Okay.
Eastern has not changed, so.
Not that it's any of my business, but are you going to try to preserve all those trees that I see from the aerial?
Um, we're going to preserve a lot of them, but I do want to tell you that if you ever drive out there five or six years from now, your storm order department wants me to put up a lot of whip wrap along the back of those lots because of the creek.
Yeah.
So we're going to do, trees are good for us, too.
Yeah.
We're going to do what we can.
All right.
I move approval of the variance on TE number two.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE two. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Move the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 16. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 17 is C 6380, a preliminary plat of Deer Valley Estates in Ward 8.
For the record, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. Um, this one was discussed last, or two weeks ago, if you remember. The neighbors to the west came and, and they gave a very good presentation of why they didn't like what we're doing, and you asked me to go back to the drawing board, and I did. What you have in front of you is my recommended solution. I'm moving my west proper line over 50 feet. I've talked with both, both Mrs. Esri and Mr. Esri yesterday, separately, actually, but at the last phone call I had, they were okay with what I'm recommending. That's to move the west line 50 feet, sell him that piece of property at the same price per square foot of what we bought the property for, so we're not trying to get rich on that, but we're wanting to be made whole as far as that's concerned. Move that line over, which I lose two lots on that long street. So to make up for that, I'm going to put a little stub street up on the north, as you can see, going towards the pond, which, again, we explained the pond last week is more of a cattle pond that is going to be redone anyway, so I can, I can manipulate that around. But to add that stub street adds cost to the project, so here's where I'm going to need some help. The PUD you approved and the council approved approved a PUD for this size lots for 58 lots. To be able to, to be able to afford to lose the two lots and build a street, I need to add three lots. It at least makes me whole, okay? And also, one of the TEs back at the pod stage, in this stage, was to have a stub street, because at the time we did the zoning, we put that they may be private, they may not be private streets. These are private streets, will be gated, so that's why I need my variance on number three, to not have a stub street. So if I don't have to build that stub street, and, but I do have to build a new street, which will give me three more lots, it makes it all even. And I believe, I'm not sure what Mrs. Esri's going to say, but Mr. Esri last night was okay with my plan. Um, but again, we will need to administratively amend the PUD to add three more lots. Terry and JJ, I think, are okay with that, because you can do some minor amendments with, as long as it's not above a certain percent. So, again, variance to number three. All the other TEs I am fine with, but like I said, we will need your old blessing on adding three more lots. As you can see, the three I've added, as I, as Mr. Esri even pointed out, hey, those aren't even close to our house. Doesn't hurt, doesn't bother him at all.
Solved his problem. Mrs. Esri, is that agreeable with you? Is that your understanding? Do you wish to say anything additional, or we, we're good here? Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE three. Cast your votes.
Move the application.
Second. And a motion to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Brian, I'd like to make a comment that I think you did a good job. I appreciate your getting back, working with, with the Esries. They obviously didn't understand the process earlier on the zoning part of it, and you've, you've made it better. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 18 is C 6362, it's a final plat of the orchard at Raywood.
Lindsay Settle with Crafton 12, representing the applicant. We've read through the staff report and are in agreement with all of the TEs.
No one signed up, commissioners? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 18. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 19 is SPUD 684, an application by Kathy Copeland, a rezone 11,600 North Penn from PUD 272, SPUD 684 in Ward 2.
Kathy Copeland, applicant, home address 12700 Jabez Road, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Could you pull that microphone down a little bit closer to you? Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioners, no one has signed up?
I'm of approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 20 is C 6392, final plat of Colony Point, Phase 3.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, representing the developer. We have read the staff report and agree with all the TEs and request approval of the plat.
Motion to approve the application?
Well, the only, the only question I have is the same question I had of the, of the previous applicant about access to the commercial area. That's TE number six.
Yes, sir. The developer did submit a letter to Terry Massey, explaining the application on what they were going to do with the access. You happen to have an aerial photograph of the site? It'd be a little easier to explain.
Well, I can see here, there's a sidewalk, it looks like, that goes to Colony Point Boulevard on my map here. Is that right?
Yes, sir. What it's going to have is the internal circulation through the residential subdivision. There is an existing sidewalk along Colony Point Boulevard. There's an existing gap of about 200 feet from the end of the residential portion over to where the commercial area is, and the developer said he would make that connection with this, with this.
And would that be part of the plat? I mean, would that be-
Yes, that would be part of the plan to this plat.
Very good. Okay, did we get a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 20. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 21 is PC 10313, an application by Landmark Land Company to rezone 12,800 South Meridian from PUD 863 to I-1 Single Family in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Isaac Christian and Chris Anderson. What we're asking for today is rezoning of a five-acre tract that is part of PUD 863 to rezone it to R-1. The exhibit you see in front of you that's also on the screen, you'll see a, a yellow box. That is the subject site, and those are the five acres that we're asking to rezone. The, the red box shows a tract four of the original PUD that is around 71 acres that's already zoned R-1. So what we're intending to do is take these five acres, include them with the 71 acres, and then we'll come back with a plat of all 76. There was a companion item, item 22, that we've asked for a continuance in order to allow staff time to review our traffic study, so that's why that one is continued. This is one where staff recommends approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
No one signed up, commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 21. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Items 22 through 24 have been continued until October the 11th. Item 25 is an ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing on October the 25th. This is regarding the changes to the Bricktown ordinance.
We need a motion to set this for a hearing.
I move that it be set for public hearing on October 25th.
Second. We have a motion and a second to set item 25. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 26 is a resolution of the Partner City Planning Commission adopting the Employment Lands Needs Assessment and Action Plan for implementation, and recommending to the city council, recommending that the city council adopt the plan for implementation.
We need a motion to approve the resolution. Move approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 26. Cast your votes, and that is approved. That concludes public hearing items. Planning Commission committees? Mike's not here. Planning Commission members? Planning Department?
Uh, nothing this week.
Development Services? Surely the municipal councillor has something? Had a thing? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Second. And we're adjourned at 2:33. That makes up for the last one.